Day of Beauty, not only in the environment, but the people around us. Thank you for every person in this room for their contribution to the purpose of this institution. Guide us today as we make decisions and we talk. I pray in Christ's name, amen. Thanks.
Follow me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me in honor of the Texas flag.
Honor of the Texas flag. Our pledge of allegiance to Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Amen.
Thank you. Remind you that the meeting is being recorded. Opportunity for any members of the public to speak to the board, if anyone wishes to do so. Seeing and hearing done, we'll move to the chancellor's update.
Okay. First item, I want to briefly talk about the meeting and workshop agenda posting at county offices. We are making a change to where we post the agendas. For many years, staff have had to post those agendas at the courthouses in both Bell and Corielle. However, research has revealed that we are no longer required by law to post in those locations. However, we will continue to post on the bulletin board outside of the administration building and on our website as required by law. Next, the Byways publication. We have Ms. Oster here with us. She is the college's outreach and reference librarian, and she's going to talk to us about this journal, Byways.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for having me. I am so excited to tell you about our Byways Journal of Arts and Letters. We gave Ms. Havens copies for everyone. What is Byways Journal of Arts and Letters? This is CTC students for the last 20 years that have been entering their creative work, their writing, their artwork. We have now included music students for music lyrics, music score. We have digital artists. So now we have our graphic students, graphic design students coming in. And what they do is they enter their work, and if they are chosen, they are published. Authors, published artists. We have seven different past CTC students. You can buy their books on Amazon right now because they were able to put on their resume that they were published in our Byways. Two graphic design students, one that got a job in Washington, DC. The other one is now illustrating children's books. Why? It's now on their resume. So we are pleased to be able to help our CTC students get involved and be creative and get started on their creative career. So we really thank you guys for allowing us to do that. Thank you.
I just finished reading the poem about gummy bears. And I think Dr. Seuss would be proud of those.
We are very proud of all of our creative CTC students, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oster. And next, we have Dr. Garrett, who will come talk about the SACS-OC compliance report.
Good afternoon. I didn't get to say hello to everybody earlier. I came running in here, so good afternoon and glad to see everyone. It was recommended by our SACS VP that we give the board a copy of Section 4 and 5, which contains multiple standards. Section 4 is about you, the governing board, and Section 5 is about administration operations. That's what you've been given. There are two tabs, one for Section 4, one for Section 5. And then there's a third tab that outlines the findings of the off-site review of our entire compliance report, and that's included. And you can see, if you look through that, each of the standards is listed and what we were in compliance with, and then the 10 that we're out of compliance on, that we need to write and work on. Two of them did fall in Section 5, which is what you got in your book there. The entire compliance report is on the website at a website address that's on the first page of your book. And I believe Ms. Havens has sent that link out. But note on the first page there, it does have a specific password, login and passwords, that you have access to our full compliance report, if you're interested in reviewing the entire thing. But Sections 4 and 5 were recommended, that we printed those and give those to you directly for your review. Any questions?
At this point, as we sit here, how can we become, going on the website and reading this, we will be better informed? And also, what do you need us to do? What do you need from us?
Just be informed. Really, in the back, what the reviewers said about us in each and every one, they outlined what we said that aligned with the standard. They recognized that, and they indicated whether we were in compliance or non-compliance. And if we were out of compliance, they indicated what portion of it we were out of compliance on. So you can see that detail, but if you want more detail, you can go to the website. But I think really, if you just take a look at what the reviewers said, you'll get a very good picture of our institution and what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr.
Anything else?
Thank you, ma'am.
That concludes my update.
Mr. Anderson, Campus Center Mixed-Air Unit Repair.
Good afternoon, everybody. This is a repair for the mixed-air unit for the Anderson Campus Center. The unit was damaged during the January 2024 winter storm, which was, that included the coils, control valves, associated piping needed to, I'm sorry, associated piping for the unit. A mixed-air unit helps reduce heating and cooling, building walls, and support energy efficiency. An investigation found damage to coils, control valves, piping along the roof. Quote was given by Brand Services, a byboard member of $64,114, to replace all damaged coils, control valves, and piping. Repairs will approximately takes about eight weeks, which if you approve it next week, we'll be looking at late August. And there will be no interruption of air conditioning services with the building. Installation of isolation valves has been done to avoid disruption of any service with the building. Insurance proceeds will be used to cover the cost of these repairs to equipment, piping replacement, and installation. Administration recommends approval of Brand Services for the replacement of mixed-air unit, control coils, excuse me, control valves, associated piping for Anderson Campus Center in the amount, not to exceed $64,114.
Questions? Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Briggs, do you want to speak from there, or do you need to go? Do we need to record what you said?
Yes. Go down.
Please, thank you. Free speech, peaceful assembly, and expressive activity policy.
In March, the governor issued an executive order to address the conflict in the Middle East and required institutions of higher education to adopt an antisemitism policy. And it was very specific to a statute that's already been in existence, and that is why we already have Policy 185, the free speech policy. That is in compliance with that pre-existing statute. The order required us to define antisemitism, but by using a definition that's another law. So the definition you see on Page 2 is directly from that other law. And the other parts of this policy are honestly just cleanup. Once I got into the policy, there were some things I just didn't feel like I could ignore. And so some of it are, I hear Holly laughing because I do love a good red pen. So some of them are grammatical spelling, spacing, whatever it was. But the content really is the addition of that antisemitism provision. And so that's what I have to present to you today. Have you answered any questions?
We will be asked to approve that presentation.
It is a little unique. This policy lives in the safety policies, which are government, or which are the kind of property of risk management. But that statute that requires us to have this policy also requires the board to approve that policy. So as making amendments, it was my suggestion and recommendation that the policy comes before the board.
Questions? Thank you. Ms. Morris, talking about cybersecurity training, again.
Good afternoon, and I am here again for your yearly cybersecurity training. I'm Angela Morris. I'm the IT trainer.
Thank you so much for coming, ma'am.
Not done yet. So why are we doing this training? It's mandated by the state of Texas Administrative Code, the TAC. And it's an annual requirement for colleges, for employees at colleges in the state of Texas. And your participation is critical to protect our confidential information here at CTC and also our information resources. So each of us has a responsibility to protect CTC confidential data and information resources. And you can find our policy on security. It's HR Policy 294. It happens to be on the IT website, and it is also in the HR Policies and Procedures Manual. We also have Policy 295, which happens to be our computer usage policy, which expands upon that also. You can go to the IT website, and there is an IT security webpage. It has the two policies, also includes some additional information about security, and has some tips that you can, that we recommend that you put into practice also. So what is confidential information? This is information that must be protected from unauthorized direct access to the public. Some of this includes personal identifiable information, which could include things like your name, your social security number, mother's maiden name, anything that's unique to an individual. Could also include biometric data, which includes things like fingerprints, retinal scans, telecommunication access. It could be bank cards. It could be your cell phone, if you happen to leave that laying around. Somebody were to pick that up and access any personal information on that. Sensitive information includes things like your account credentials. So this would be your login information, user IDs and passwords. Could also include information about the structure or configuration of our security and gaining access to our systems here. Any information that is considered trade secrets, intellectual property, certain types of research data, and any other information that CTC would want to keep private. So acceptable use, the state of Texas wants us to make sure that we ensure compliance with all of their mandates and regulations that are put forth to us, establish prudent and acceptable practices regarding the use of our information resources, and to educate individuals on how to go out there and protect those resources. Privacy policies are basically mechanisms that are going to be able to establish limits and expectations for use of our information resources. So internal users should know that there is no expectation of privacy when they are using CTC information resources. So in order to go out there and know that we need to have protections in place, we first need to also know the risk. And some of those risks include people having access to our sensitive and confidential information, theft, accidental disclosure, software theft, intellectual property theft, unauthorized access or use, hardware theft. And these possible impacts from these risks could include reputational damage, financial loss, interruption of critical services, and compliance fines and sanctions against, from regulatory agencies. Another thing that we need to be concerned about is to make sure that we use authorized software on the computers here at CTC. We need to make sure that we're not using any of the free or the trial software. A lot of times, those are just for individuals. We are a business, and so a lot of times when you do want to install different types of software on our different systems, there is going to be some type of software license involved. CTC, for all of our software that we do use here, has those software licenses. But a lot of times, those free and those trial software that you would happen to put on your computer are not authorized to be on business computers. So just keep that in mind. Prohibited software, any type of software that would be used to hack into other computers, such as the scramblers. If you happen to go sometimes to the gas station, you've heard of the scramblers that they have out there that are put into the gas pumps to collect information. There would be these types of tools. Software that will proxy somebody else as to gain access to their computer. Software that instructs or enables users to participate in activities that are considered a threat to local, state, and national security. And we have a software engineer or a computer security engineer. His name is Michael Hunter. If you have any questions about what is acceptable, you can contact him, and he'll be happy to provide a list for you. So what are those threats that are targeting us? There are different types of threats that can target us here at CTC. I think I went over these last year. There's phishing, spear phishing, phishing, and smishing. And so the two that target email are the phishing and the spear phishing. And these are usually through email. Phishing are going to be those emails that you get that are going to try to trick you to give your information through the email. So they might be something that you might get from a bank, or since we are an educational institution, sometimes there are book resellers and things like that. They will come at, you know, come with the email that is sent to you. They'll ask, you know, if you have any books to resell, and there'll be a link for you to click on. A lot of times, when you click on that link, they ask for personal information. And if you enter that information, if they're not legitimate, then you've just given your information to somebody that was out there trying to get your personal information. If you responded to one of these emails, contact the IT Help Desk right away at help desk@ctcd.edu, or give them a call at 254-501-3103, and they will be happy to assist you with that. A lot of times, if you do get those emails and you recognize it for the threat that it is, you can just go out there and delete it. So a lot of times, we do have people that will send that to the Help Desk so that we can put out a service alert. That service alert notifies everyone else on campus that that threat is circulating through email. Spear phishing is targeted phishing. So this is going to be targeted to a specific individual or group. Again, it might be to our institution because we are in education. It might be book resellers. It might be somebody wanting to, for me, training. I get a lot of training, and so on and so forth. If I don't solicit it, usually I just delete those emails, especially if there's links in them. And so both are, again, targeted at email. One is just kind of a generalized email. The other one is targeted to its audience. So some tips for not going out there and clicking on any of these. If you don't know where an email comes from, don't click on it. If you're not expecting it, don't click on it. Do not open any attachments that are attached to the email. And again, especially if you don't know where that email is coming from. Usually, if it's somebody that sent it, and maybe it was legitimate, they will try again. Maybe follow up with a call also to say, hey, maybe, you know, you've deleted my email. Be expecting another one from me. But again, if you're not sure who it's from, don't click on that. Delete any suspicious or suspect email. And make sure that you keep your computer, any other devices such as iPads and phones, up to date with antivirus software, and be sure that you're current with critical updates. So I know I have an Apple device. Apple's been pretty, every couple of months, sending out a lot of the critical updates. So beyond email, there is phishing and smishing. So phishing is going to be targeted at your phones. So this will be your voicemail, and not just cell phones, but also your landlines. I know I've received a lot of calls from people wanting to buy my house, people wanting to do my taxes, things like that. Again, don't give out any personal information to these individuals. And the smishing will leverage your SMS or your texting service. And so same thing. They may go out there and say, you have a package, it's waiting at the post office, and pay us so much money, and we'll go ahead and send that package through.
Three dollars.
Three dollars. Yeah. Lately, they have been, and I've been seeing a lot of emails where, or text messages, excuse me, where I'll get a message that says, hi, hello, what's for dinner tonight? You know, you may not look at who that message is from and maybe want to respond back and say, hey, anything that, you know, you cook, or something like that. But again, those are messages that are sent to try to collect information from you. So if it's not in your contact, if it doesn't have a name associated to it, if you don't know where the, you know, recognize the number, then just go ahead and delete those messages.
I receive hundreds of calls a day, it seems, many of them in text messages as well. One thing that's kind of coming up repeatedly is, you're in my phone system. Who are you? And of course, I report spammer with Verizon at that point. So any and all that I get like, if, like you say, if they're not in my Rolodex, that's old timers, not Rolodexes, then then they're not going to get a reply, they're going to get a spam.
Yes, yes. And unfortunately, the problem with blocking those is that a lot of those individuals will use a variety of different numbers. They will not use the same number each time. So thinking that you're blocking them, or that one individual, they will come back and send another message with another number a couple of days later. So again, keep doing that.
They're like spooking your number?
Yes.
And we get that a lot from someone way far away, making like they're from our local area?
Yes, yeah. And unfortunately, you know, all you can do is just keep doing what you're doing and just kind of be vigilant on those numbers, and be sure not to be clicking on any of those. I make it a habit to make sure that all of those callers that are legitimate to me, I do place their number with a name in my contact list so that when it does come up, you know, I know exactly who it is. And if they don't have a name associated with it, if you've changed your number, you're going to have to notify me on the old number to let me know first, you know, so. And there's also farming, which is a little bit different. This is when you're out there surfing on the web, or you're just using the web to maybe look at a couple of sites. Let's say that you go to a news site, you notice all the little pop-ups that come up all the time. Be sure not to click on any of those. A lot of times, those are an attempt to gather information from you or to put some type of malware on your device, whether it be your computer, your iPad, or your phone. Also, if you're doing a search, let's say that you go out there through Google and you type in searching for Central Texas College. If Central Texas College is not the first result, then if it's somewhere, someone else where they actually put Central Texas College, but it's a different address, it's not www.ctt.edu, do not click on that. And that's just an example, but a lot of companies can go out there. Individuals also can go out there and pay for that spot on those searches. And so you need to kind of be vigilant when you do your search, not to click on the sponsored links, and it'll tell you if it is sponsored or not. And so the actual search that you did may be four or five spaces down. And so just be looking at the address when you actually go out there and do a search and know that you're clicking on the one that you actually want. And what, with the farming, what they're doing is as soon as you click on the website or a pop-up, then they've installed maybe some type of malware to collect information from you off of your device. So I would be vigilant with that. And this is an example here. So for farming, safe computing practices, be careful about visiting websites without knowing the author of the publisher. Be vigilant about checking the URL, which is the web address, to make sure it's the location that you actually want to visit. Update your desktop, laptop, and mobile device with antivirus software. And again, keep current with your critical updates. So where do these threats come from? Hackers, criminal groups, terrorist groups, hacktivists. These are some of the places that you'll have threats come from. And their intentions are basically to go out there and make a profit sometimes, some money or profit, revenge or retaliation, political gain, special cause activism, which are your hacktivists, hate, national security, whether it be domestic or international, and just for fun sometimes. So one single vulnerability is all an attacker needs to actually get into your system. So for incident management and procedures to report anything, be sure to notify our IT Help Desk. And be sure to look over the policies that we have. CTC Policy 294, which is our security policy, 295, which is our computer use policy. Again, you can find that on the IT webpage, and you can also find that in the Again, you can find that on the IT webpage and you can also find that in the HR policies and procedures manual. And if you do become aware of any threats, just notify the IT help desk. And if those threats are really big or a potential criminal activity, again, notify the IT help desk if need be. We can also notify the campus police on that. And we do have an internet use policy. Just be sure that the software that you use on the internet is the latest. Keep your software up to date. Any applications that you have, keep those up to date also. Files downloaded should be scanned for any type of viruses or malware. Websites and applications should comply with this computer use policy. And all user activity on the CTC information resources is subject to logging and review. And no CTC confidential or sensitive data should be made public. Make sure that confidential material is transmitted by encrypting it. So if you're going to go out there and submit student information, which might include student IDs and social security numbers, make sure that's encrypted before it's sent. Electronic files need to be retained or destroyed in accordance with state record retention schedules. And incidental use must not result in a direct call to CTC or interfere with normal performance of an employee's work duties. And I do my part to fight cybercrime. So for mobile devices, which include your phones and your iPads or any tablets, make sure that you enable PINs, pass codes, and biometric access, which might be the face recognition. Maintain up-to-date software, including your operating system and any applications. And I know a lot of times on my phone, sometimes the applications are updated automatically, but sometimes I do have to go in and physically update those myself. So, you know, just kind of make it a habit to check every once in a while. Disable any features that are not in use, such as Bluetooth, infrared, or Wi-Fi. This has been a big one for me this year, just because there are individuals that can go around and they have applications on their devices that can actually get into your device through Wi-Fi or through Bluetooth. So if I'm not at home or I'm not at work, if I'm just grocery shopping or maybe at a restaurant, I've tried to make it a habit all the time to turn off my Wi-Fi and turn off my Bluetooth. And so when I get back to a secure area such as home, then I can turn it back on. But I tend to do that now. And you might notice people sometimes walking around, you know, kind of in the grocery store with their, with their phone and they're in there for maybe as long as you're shopping, an hour maybe or so, and they haven't bought anything. So, you know, I would just, I'd be kind of wary of that. Set Bluetooth enabled devices to non-discoverable, so any watches that you might have or any other devices, headsets or headphones, things like that, so that they're not detected. Avoid joining any unknown Wi-Fi networks that you're not sure of. And don't install apps that you don't need and delete unused apps. And to kind of expand this a little bit further, if you do have your apps on your phone, I tend to log out and log back in. I know it's inconvenient sometimes, but especially apps that might have any type of financial information and so forth. I know sometimes, you know, we tend to be able just to leave it logged in and just go and hit that little application and get right back into it. But it might be a good idea to maybe log off and log in all the time, especially, you know, if you kind of consider that if you've left your phone unattended, somebody picks it up, they might be able to get into that. But again, that brings us back to making sure that you have pass codes and PINs and biometric set on your device also, so that if somebody does pick that up, they can't easily get into your phone. And delete information stored on the device prior to getting rid of it, discarding it. So if you take it to your cell phone vendor, be sure that you delete it yourself instead of having them do that for you. So types of malware. And this is software that can go out there and gather information. This includes viruses, Trojan horses, keyloggers, adware, and ransomware. And so again, a lot of these you might activate by going into an unknown email or text message and clicking on the link or opening up an attachment and releasing one of these. Virus would be able to go out there, replicate itself, spread throughout your device and also devices, other devices on the network. So that would be other CTC computers also. Trojan horses look like legitimate software programs, but they are not. A lot of times they're out there to do damage also. Keyloggers, programs that can go out there and gather information about what you're typing. And so if you're typing in a user ID and password, then whoever has submitted that and is on the other end of that can get your user login to get into different accounts. Adware, described disguised as advertising. A lot of times this will be some of the pop-ups and the different ads that you might click on. And ransomware is software that is out there to gather your information. A lot of times if they get into your system, they lock it up and they want a ransom in order to unlock it. So, and a lot of times they don't keep their end of the bargain. Warning signs that you might be infected. Increased pop-up messages when you didn't have those before. Sudden appearance of new items on your toolbar that you haven't seen before. Slow and freezing computer, sudden lack of hard drive storage, maybe there's a worm that's out there, it replicates itself just over and over again until it fills up your storage. Applications opening without you doing anything, without any action on your part. Emails being sent from your account without action on your part. Certain files on your device that will not open. Antivirus software disabled without you doing, doing anything on your own. Hard drive activity when your computer should be idle. Any questions about that? Well, I have questions for you guys. First question, it's acceptable to share my password with IT staff and other trusted individuals?
False.
That is false. And so a lot of times if you need something with your iPad done, we'll have a technician come down and they will actually have you there to log into your iPad. They'll go out there, do whatever they need to do. If somehow that page closes, they will give it back to you to have you open it up again. It's a process, but we will never ask for your passwords. Which of the following is suspicious email? So an unexpected message from an international prince wanting to share his inheritance with you, an email from a bank that you haven't used in years, but they claim that they need my account information to process a transaction. An email from a Russian beauty queen who is looking at, for my assistance at finding an American husband, or threatening communication from the IRS indicating that my taxes are overdue and will be pressing charges if I don't give them private information.
I know with echo.
Echo, yes. Emails in my inbox and files that I've created and stored on CTC-owned or provided information resources are my personal property.
False.
That is false. No expectation for privacy or that anything belongs to you that's on CTC information resources. Which of the following may be a sign that my device is infected with malware? So slow and freezing computer, increased pop-up windows, applications opening without action on your part, or hard drive activity when your computer is idle.
All of the above.
All of the above. So thank you again for attending. And it takes all CTCD employees to help maintain network and computer security. Please take these lessons and apply them every day. And if you have any questions, contact the IT help desk and they can get in contact with me too, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions, comment?
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm ready to go buy another Big Chief tablet.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is recommendation of topics from, for upcoming agenda items or announcements.
Just an observation. Downstairs in our student cafeteria, our equipment, especially some of the chairs and seating arrangements are getting kind of worn and look like they're kind of second-hand furniture. I wondered, hopefully, that when we adjust the budget, we can address some of those repair issues. I don't know if you looked at it lately, but on the way out, take a look at them. It looks pretty, pretty skanky. Having visited Temple College recently, Chancellor and I were really not impressed with what they got over there and I don't want to imitate them over here.
Then we will be back together next week, same time, same place. After that, the workshop in July, on the 16th. Thank you.